Good evening. It is this Monday, April 25th, 5:15, and the Carroll City Council meeting is now in session. Would you all please rise and join with me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. We have before us tonight's consent agenda, and I will read it as follows. Approval of the minutes of the April 11th meeting, approval of this cycle's bills and claims. We have two licenses and permits, a renewal of a Class E liquor license with Class B wine permit, and that is with Walgreens. Oh, and that also includes a Class C beer permit. Sunday sales for Walgreens. The next one is a renewal of a Class E liquor license with Class B wine permit and a Class C beer permit, Sunday sales for Hy-Vee. Additionally to that, we have a sock rail trail rehabilitation DOT form that needs to be, there will be a signature on it to complete it, and then coronavirus state and local fiscal recovery, SLFRF, that's ARPA funds program, and that includes a resolution that designates those funds as a replacement for lost public sector revenue. And we also have a Carroll Merchants Park concession stand lease with Kemper Catholic Schools, also a youth sports complex Field 7 lease with Kemper Catholic Schools, and also a Carroll concession stand lease, the North Youth Sports Complex with Gary McGill. Those last three all include resolutions in it as well. Are there any questions or comments about tonight's consent agenda?
Yeah, I do. On the concession stand for the Merchants Park for the Carroll Public Schools, is there anybody covering that?
Yeah, so the school district, Carroll Community School Districts, will cover their own concessions. Their plan is to bring the trailer in to do it out of there. And I would note, they were jointly offered to run a single concession stand and then share in the revenue with an arrangement with Merchants Baseball, but they ultimately chose not to pursue that and do it independently.
All right.
This just wasn't in our report here. Okay.
I'm fine then.
Any other questions on the consent agenda? If not, we're in order for a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda, please.
So moved.
We have a motion, and then also a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Rule call, please.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Bornaro?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. We'll move to item number four on tonight's agenda. These are oral requests and communications from the audience, members of the public wishing to address the council for items that are not on tonight's agenda. And it looks like we have, okay, and name and address, please.
Yeah, my name's Phil Phillips. My address is 435 East Pleasant Ridge Road, Carroll. I've lived in Carroll about 40 years. So, I came here tonight to speak in favor of the ordinance to make Carroll a sanctuary city. I believe you have been given a model ordinance designed specifically for Carroll. The attorney who prepared the year in our ordinance has offered to represent Carroll in any lawsuit against us and free of charge. I urge the council to consider this ordinance, thoroughly discuss it, bring it to a vote, and pass it. I believe our community is strongly pro-life, and our actions will turn a bright light on abortion. Other cities will follow our lead, and eventually the whole state. We have only to begin that process. The scourge of abortion has been with us for 50 years. 63 million children have been murdered. We have tried to hide the horror of abortion by using cryptic language and covering up the reality. Who can it be against giving someone a choice? Who can be against making procedures safe and rare? We are not all fooled. No one will always be fooled. At some time, the horror that will be made real for even the most staunch pro-choice abortion advocate. Three events in my life have made me pro-life and anti-abortion. First, the birth of my children, who profoundly changed my life for the better and continue to this day to enrich it and give it meaning. I desire that for all people. Second, in 1966, a few years ago, I dated for a while a woman who was an illegitimate child. Her parents never married. She never knew her father. When abortion was discussed in the 1960s, I realized that had abortion been legal in the 1940s, Pat might have been aborted. I liked her. My life would have been diminished had I never met her. I saw the reality of abortion. Later, Pat married. She had children. She even adopted a special needs child. Many people were enriched by this illegitimate child who might have been aborted. Third, in 1963, my sister Kathleen, or Punky as I knew her or called her, became pregnant by a man she never married. In those days, girls went away to have the child. Punky spent eight months in Kansas with friends of my mother. I still remember vividly the day she came home. I'd worked all day at the block plant. I was sweaty and dirty. And when I came into the living room, she greeted me with a hug. It's one of the most memorable hugs I've ever received. After that, we became close friends. I always visited her in my many travels when I was in the Navy and going to school. I spent many evenings with her and later with her and her children, laughing, talking, smoking cigarettes, and just being together. She died of cancer in 1975. The father of the child died in an accident in 1968. In 2011, I got a letter from a state agency in Kansas saying a possible relative was trying to get in touch with me. That letter was about the child. His name's Matt. Our family went to Oklahoma to meet Matt. Matt lives in Texas. We had an instant bond. He's much like my dad. He even enjoyed hunting and fishing, just like my dad did. Matt has a son and daughter. The daughter is very pretty, and she looks very much like Punky. We last saw them this past spring when we went to San Antonio, Michelle and I. I reflect today how much that pregnancy carried to term has enriched my life, and the fruit continues to enrich it. I'm thankful for the courage my sister had and the guidance my parents provided her. There's an obvious parallel between the issue of abortion that we face today and the issue of slavery in the 19th century. Slaves, like the unborn, were treated as non-persons. The issue divided the country, much as it's divided today. Slavery was only ended by the Civil War. If you read Lincoln's speeches from the 40s and 50s, you can reflect on how difficult a problem slavery and its solution was to him and how he agonized over it. In his second inaugural address, he said this: "The Almighty has his own purposes. Woe unto the world because of offenses; for it must needs be that offenses come, but woe to that man by whom the offense cometh. If we shall suppose that American slavery is one of those issues which, in the providence of God, must needs come, but which, having continued through his appointed time, he now wills to remove, and that he gives to both North and South this terrible war, as the woe due to those by whom the offense came, shall we discern therein any departure from those divine attributes which the believers in a living God always ascribe to him?" Fondly, it'll be soon over, okay? "Fondly do we hope, fervently do we pray, that this mighty scourge of war may speedily pass away. Yet if God wills, let it continue until all the wealth piled up by the bondsman's 250 years of unrequited toll shall be sunk, and until every drop of blood drawn by the lash shall be paid by another drawn by the sword. As was said 3,000 years ago, still it must be said, the judgments of the Lord are true and righteous altogether." Lincoln ends his speech with an appeal to healing and unity and the famous line, "With malice towards none, with charity for all." I pray that we end the abortion culture without requiring anything like a civil war to resolve, and that we can heal the wounds of the slaughter of innocents. But, as Lincoln says, "The Almighty has his own purposes, and his judgments are true and righteous altogether."
Thank you for the extra minute. Thank you, Phil.
Yeah.
Points taken. Are there any other oral requests from those in attendance? Okay. Name and address, of course.
Name and address?
Yeah.
Kay Stevens. I'm Carroll, Iowa, 23735 Highway 30 is my address. I'm here on behalf of a property on 7th Street that Jim Neeland owns. And I believe there's, forgive me if I don't have the right language, an ordinance that helped me, Mike.
So, just briefly for the council's information. So, as you recall, about a little over 14 months ago, the city entered into a stipulation order regarding this property that really stipulated that it needed to be brought up to code inhabitable. Today is actually that deadline of the stipulation agreement.
Thank you. And so, we have reached an agreement to purchase the property pending approval on an extension of that deadline that you had. So, I did print out a timeline, and I do have a copy of the purchase agreement to hand over to whoever wants it. And what I would ask for is, pending approval of that, is basically a one-year extension that would allow me time to pull a building permit, to get a rip on in a timely manner, in a matter of about two months, and then have the remainder of the year to demo and renovate the four units in that building. So, anybody have any questions?
I'd like to see the purchase agreement. Do we get to see that?
Yeah.
I would say, I would take it. I guess what I would advise council, this is not a actionable item tonight.
Okay.
So, what I would suggest is, we just receive this at this point. We'll work with Mr. Neeland, who's out here in the audience, and Ms. Stevens to see if this is an acceptable timeline, and then we'll present it in two weeks to council to consider.
Perfect.
A question that might get asked, it would, I think, at least for myself, is, is there a possibility of anything being more aggressive than one year? And I understand getting contractors and that sort of thing, but are we saying up to a year? Are we saying a year?
Ideally, it would be sooner than that, Mark. However, you know, just knowing the couple big projects I have going on in my own timeline, I would like to give myself a little bit of cushion versus asking for grace at the end.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, very well. And are there any other? Barry?
Excuse me, Mayor. My wife is trying to watch it on TV. Is it not being?
Problem with the YouTube?
So, we're having a YouTube feed issue.
Feed is bad.
But it is on Cat 6 Live.
It's on what?
Cat 6, our cable access channel.
Oh, cable access. Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Any other oral comments, those in attendance? Hearing none. We will move on to item number five on tonight's agenda, and that's the Fiscal Year 21 Annual Financial Statement Audit. And we have with us tonight Jenny Walkup of Feldman Accurate. Am I pronouncing that right? I think so.
Yes.
And she knows the drill pretty well, better than I do. So, Jenny, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Okay, and we have a few new people here, right?
Yes.
So, I'm assuming that you want the full, or brief?
The full summary. How about that? Because these guys are, they're betting on an over-under on me tonight, and I took the under, so, yeah.
Okay. My firm, Feldman and Company CPAs, did do an independent audit on the city of Carroll, and the report is on page five of the report. "To the Honorable Mayor and Members of the City Council, we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Carroll as of and for the year ended June 30th, 2021, and the related notes to the financial statements which collectively comprise the city's basic financial statements as listed in the table of contents. Management is responsible for the preparation and fair presentation of these financial statements in accordance with the cash basis of accounting described in Note 1. This includes determining cash basis of accounting as an acceptable basis for the preparation of financial statements and the circumstances. This includes the design, implementation, and maintenance of the internal control relevant to preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements that are free from material misstatement whether due from fraud or error. Our responsibility is to express an opinion on these financial statements based on our audit. We conducted our audit in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing standards. The standards are applicable to the financial audits contained in government auditing standards issued by the Comptroller General of the United States. Those standards require that we plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. An audit includes performing procedures to obtain audit evidence about the amounts and disclosures in the financial statements. The procedures selected depend on the auditor's judgment, including the assessment of the risk of material misstatement from the financial statements, whether due to fraud or error. In making these risk assessments, the auditor considers the internal control relevant to the city's preparation and fair presentation of the financial statements in order to design audit procedures that are appropriate in the circumstances, but not for the purpose of expressing an opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal control. Accordingly, we do not express such an opinion. The audit also includes evaluating the appropriateness of the accounting policies used and the reasonableness of the significant accounting estimates made by management, as well as evaluating the overall presentation of the financial statements. We believe that our audit evidence, we have attained a sufficient and appropriate to provide a basis for our audit opinions. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to above fairly present in all material respects, respective cash balance of the financial position of the government activities, the business type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the city of Carroll at June 30th, 2021, and the respective changes in cash basis financial position for the year then ended in accordance with the basis of accounting described in Note 1. As described in Note 1, these financial statements are prepared on a basis of cash receipts and dispersments, which is a basis of accounting other than U.S. generally accepted accounting principles. Our opinions are not modified with respect to this matter. Our audit was conducted for the purpose of forming opinions of the financial statements that collectively comprise the city's basic financial statements. We previously audited, in accordance with the standards referred to in the third paragraph of this report, the financial statements for the 24 years ended June 20th, 2022, which are not presented herewith, and expressed unmodified opinions on these financial statements, which are prepared on the basis of cash receipts and dispersments. The supplementary information included in Schedules 1 and 6 is presented for purposes of additional analysis and not a required part of the basic financial statements. The supplemental information is a responsibility of management and was derived from and relates directly to the underlying accounting and other records used to prepare the financial statements. Such information has been subjected to the auditing procedures applied in the audit of the basic financial statements and certain additional procedures, including preparing, comparing, and reconciling such information directly to the underlying accounting records and other records used to prepare the basic financial statement or to the financial statements themselves, and other additional procedures in accordance with U.S. generally accepted auditing procedures. In our opinion, the supplementary information is fairly stated in all material respects in relation to the basic financial statements taken as a whole. The other information, management's discussion and analysis, the budgetary comparison information, the schedule of the city's proportionate share of net pension liability, and the schedule of the city's contributions on pages 15, 52, and 50 through 60 have not been subjected to the auditing procedures applied in the audit of the basic financial statements, and accordingly, we do not express an opinion or provide any assurance on it. In accordance with the government auditing standards, we also issued a report dated November 9th, 2021, on our consideration of the city's internal control of financial reporting and our test of its compliance with certain provisions of laws, regulations, contracts, and grant agreements and other matters. The purpose of that report is solely to describe the scope of our testing of internal control over financial reporting and compliance, and the results of that testing, and not to provide an opinion on the effectiveness of the city's internal control over financial reporting or on compliance. That report is an intricate part of the audit performed in accordance with general auditing standards and is in considering that the city of Carroll's internal control over financial reporting and compliance. I will refer you to the next couple pages. Starting on page 8 is the city's discussion and analysis. This comes from your city manager and your city financial. This is giving the highlights, and I will just touch on the highlights, and then you can read the rest on your own. The city's governmental receipts decreased 7% or approximately $1,112,000 from fiscal 2020. The main reason for this decrease was that no debt was issued in the fiscal year 2021. However, the decrease was offset by an increase in operating grants and contributions. Dispersments of the city's governmental activities also decreased by $1,555,000 or about 9.8% from fiscal 2020. Capital projects is the main reason for this decrease. The city's total cash basis net position increased about 4.7% or approximately $1,090,000 from June 2020 to June 30, 2021. Of this amount, the cash basis net position of the government activities increased $683,000. Cash basis of the net position of the business type accounts increased approximately 407. And then if you go into Exhibit A, which is the statement of activities and net position for the entire government of the city of Carroll. On page 18, you will note that this is backwards from general accounting. You do the income, and then you do the expenses, and we either make money or lose money. Cities don't operate on that fact. They are not in it to make money. So, the most important thing of the cities is where are they spending the money? That's the first column, expenses. You have public safety program spending $2,155,000, public works program spending $2,200,000, health and social services spending $129,000, culture and recreation spending $2,705,000, community and economic development spending $419,000, general government $1,013,000, debt $2,098,000, and capital projects $3,775,485. So that the total governmental activities spent $14,300,000 last year. For business type activities, water spent $2,858,000, sewer $883,000, stormwater $6,795,000, for a total of $3,749,000, for a total of expenditures of $18,490,000. The next column on page 18 is the charges for services. The city does charge for their water. They do charge for licenses. They charge for recreational programs. That's in this column. The third column is the program revenues for operating grants and contributions that were made and any restricted interest for particular programs. You'll see that they brought in $1,935,000 on operating grants. And then there was a million dollars, $1,770,000 in capital grants to offset the capital projects funds. There is also $80,000 in the stormwater capital grant. Then you will see the net for the governmental activities. You will note that all of the funds or all of the activities have a deficit balance, which is to be expected, with the exception of the public works. That came in with a positive $156,000. But, expense has still exceeded the income coming in for operating income and capital income by $9,324,000 for the governmental. But we brought in general purpose property taxes of $5,341,000, debt service $866,000, tax increment financing $1,120,000. We have property tax replacement of $216,000. We have hotel motel tax bringing in $189,000. We have local option sales tax bringing in $1,905,000, franchise taxes $122,000. We have unrestricted investment income bringing in $112,000, bond proceeds we had none, and miscellaneous $6,000, and transfers $124,000. That's the column for business activities, which shows the $683,000 increase in funds for the year stated in the management. Total revenue, total balance on hand at the end of the year, $15,579,000. For the business activities, the water fund is a deficit of $1,258,000. The sewer had a positive of $1,225,000. Stormwater had $338,000. They also had some investment interest, and they had some miscellaneous income and the transfers. So, they showed a positive cash increase of $406,000. Added to the prior year balance, they are at $8,847,000. So, this is the city-wide presentation. The next page is the governmental in itself. Government is basically the general fund, and then we have the road use fund, as in special revenue, along with the local option sales tax in column 3. The debt service is column 4, capital projects is column 5, and all other non-major governmental programs are then in the next column. And the details, that you can look at your leisure, are on page 62 and 63. Those funds are the employee benefits, the urban renewal, the Ashwood urban renewal, the recreational center, the police forfeiture, crime prevention, library trust, cemetery, perpetual care, and the rec center trust. And those are all added up in that sixth column. Seventh column is the total. You'll see that here we do show the income, receipts first, then the dispersments, and the excess or deficiency of receipts over dispersments, and then with your operating transfers in and operating transfers out and the balances thereon. The bottom of that particular statement does show that we have some funds that are restricted, which cannot be used for anything else, and you'll notice that primarily on the road use and on the debt service. We have restricted for uses. We have funds that are also assigned, which means you've dedicated those, but not to the point where you can't use it for something else if you have to. And then we have the unassigned. Most of the general fund money is in unassigned. Capital projects, of course, is reserved, committed for capital projects. That balance in its entirety, debt service in its entirety is for debt service. Exhibit C, which is the next, excuse me, D on 24 and 25, this is the statement of enterprise funds. This is the statement of enterprise funds, the business funds. This shows you the water and the sewer and the major, and the stormwater, and then all of the other non-major, which you would find in Schedule Two on sixty-four, sixty-five, which is the water depreciation, the stormwater capital improvement fund, the water meter deposit fund, the sewer depreciation fund, sewer capital improvement fund, and water capital improvement funds. Those are all aggregated in the third column with, along with the total. The employees' health is actually in the internal service fund. And in this column, we are, we collected it all in one account, and now we're aggregating it to where did the monies get spent, actually. Public service, public works, cultural recreation, and thereon, along with the charges to those funds for the health insurance. At the end of the year, the water, sewer, stormwater, and others had an increase of revenue of four hundred and six thousand dollars, added to the prior years, eight hundred, or eight million, eight hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars. We have the notes to the financial statements beginning on page twenty-seven. Note three on page thirty-one is probably the one you'd be more interested in. This is the annual debt service requirements for the next five years individually, and then all the years thereafter. So that you will see where the principal and interest and how much is going to be paid in each of the next five years. Descriptions of those notes are on the following pages. And then we have description and explanation of the pension for Ipers and how much money was spent in that. We do have on page four, or page forty-seven, note fourteen for subsequent events. And the reason we bring up subsequent events is because you have allocated or you have committed funds, which means this is what you intend to use the remaining balances from the year end. You're going to use it for these purposes. You entered a construction contract of four hundred and fifty-six thousand dollars for the street restoration project twenty twenty-one. Entered into a contract for two hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars for Northeast Park parking lot. Entered into an engineering services for Adam Street reconstruction of two hundred and twenty-eight thousand dollars. And the city has refunded the general obligation notes from tw- twenty eighteen and issued three million, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars after year end. Schedule three is the individual notes for indebtedness on page sixty-six and sixty-seven. You'll see when we borrowed it, how much we borrowed, what the balance is at the beginning of the year, how much we paid off last year, which was one million, eight hundred and nine thousand dollars. Ending balance, the eight million, six twenty-seven, and how much interest was paid thereon. And then Schedule Four is an individual note. Amortization schedule. You'll see exactly where that is. Schedule Six is a comparison of receipts and dispersments from the last ten years. So you'll see exactly how much money did we bring in last year compared to twenty twelve or twenty eighteen. And you can look at that at your leisure. Page twenty, or seventy-four and seventy-five is my report on internal control and financial reporting. Summary is on seventy-six that we had no, we have an unmodified opinion, which was issued on the financial statements were, which were prepared on the basis of cash receipts and dispersments, which is a comprehensive basis of accounting other than U.S. generally accepted principles. The audit did not disclose non-compliance, which is material to the financial statements. We found no matters for internal control deficiency, and we found no matters in instances of non-compliance. Then we have the schedule of findings and questioned costs on page seventy-eight. We are required to report on official depositories. You do have a resolution which names the maximum amounts to be put into any one bank, and they were not exceeded during the year. You have a legal responsibility for the certified budget, and during the year, the dispersments did not exceed what you had budgeted for twenty twenty-one. No expenditures for city money and travel expenses for the spouses of city officials or employees were noted. We did note two business transactions between city and city officials. The first one being Clay Haley as a council member. There was six thousand, nine hundred and ten dollars and sixty-six cents spent on parts and repairs. Decory Ventiger, who's an employee. He takes care of nooses, abatements, cleanups, and we, and he was paid one thousand, three hundred and fifty-five dollars. In accordance with Chapter three sixty-two point five, point three, point J of the Code of Iowa, the transactions for lawns, rons, lawn service do not appear to represent a conflict since the total transactions were less than six thousand dollars during the year. The transactions with Haley included transactions that does not appear to represent a conflict since it is the purchase of a mower in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars, which was entered into through a competitive bidding process in accordance with Chapter three sixty-two point five, point three, point D of the Code of Iowa. There are several funds with excess balances. According to Iowa Code, you can only have a balance in that account not to exceed what you spent in that account. However, in special revenue, road use tax, direct center trust, the library trust, the police forfeiture and crime prevention special account were in excess of the dispersments for those funds for the year, as was the capital projects corridor of commerce, the street maintenance building, parks and recreation, water depreciation, water meter deposit, sewer utility, sewer utility depreciation, sewer utility capital improvement, water utility, you, stormwater utility, stormwater capital improvement. Our recommendation was that the city should consider the necessity of maintaining these substantial balances and were financially feasible, consider reducing the balance in an orderly manner in order to reduce through revenue reductions. The response from the city was that the special revenues and capital projects and utility funds have planned future programs and projects that will reduce the fund balances. Conclusion is that we accepted their response. Bond coverage of the city officials and employees are in accordance with statutory provisions. We found no transactions that we believe should have been reported by the council in the minutes, but that were not. We noted no instances of non-compliance with the investment provisions of Chapter twelve B and twelve C of the Code and the city's investment policy. We noted no instances of non-compliance with the terms of the city's revenue bond and note provisions. We did observe deficit ending balances for the capital project airport in the amount of ten thousand dollars and the capital project library city hall in the amount of ten thousand dollars at June thirtieth, twenty twenty-one. The city should investigate alternatives to eliminate these deficits in order to return these funds to a sound financial position. The deficit in the capital funds is airport is due to the construction cost incurred prior to receipt of the state grant proceeds. The deficit will be eliminated next year. The deficit in the capital project city, library city hall fund is due to a funding agreement with Carroll County. The deficit is anticipated to be eliminated in fiscal twenty twenty-three. Response accepted. Tax increment financing, Chapter four oh three nineteen, four oh three twenty-two, Code of Iowa, provides the municipality to certify loans, advances indebtedness and bonds to the county auditor, which qualify for reimbursement from the incremental tax, property tax submitted in fiscal twenty twenty-one. The county auditor provides a division of property taxes to repay the certified indebtedness and provides available incremental property tax in subsequent fiscal years without further certification by the city until the amount of the certified indebtedness is paid. We noted no corrections needed to the TIF certification and compliance with Chapter four oh three of the Code. Also, the city properly completed the tax increment debt certificate forms to request the TIF property funds. Urban renewal annual report was approved and certified by the Department of Management. On or before December first, no exceptions were noted. Questionable donations. In accordance with Article Three, Section thirty-one of the Iowa Constitution, it prohibits governmental properties from making a gift to private nonprofit corporations, stating that no public money or property shall be appropriated for local or private purposes. And an attorney general's opinion dated April twenty-fifth, nineteen seventy-nine, and at least five more official AG opinions have consistently concluded a governmental body may not donate public funds to a private entity, even if the entity is established for charitable education purposes and performs work which the government could perform directly. The opinion further states, even if the function of the private nonprofit corporation fits within the scope of the activities generally recognized as serving public purpose, a critical question exists regarding whether funds or property transferred to a private entity will indeed be used for those public purposes. Political subdivisions and municipalities, including cities, counties, schools, townships, or municipal governmental entities. A governmental entity, they are governed by elected bodies and indirectly responsible to the public as a whole. They are subjected to the limitations imposed on them by the state. Although a private organization may be formed to provide and support public services which are the same or similar to the services provided by the government, the private organizations are not subject to the same degree of public accountability and oversight as governmental entities. Certain dispersments were noted that which we believe may not meet the requirements of public purposes as defined in the attorney general's opinion, since the public benefits to be derived have not been clearly documented. These dispersments are detailed as follow. Carroll Area Childcare Center, seventeen thousand dollars. Retired senior citizen foster grandparents, eleven thousand dollars. Carroll County Community of Concern, five thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars. New Opportunities, ten thousand, nine hundred and twenty dollars. Animal Rescue of Carroll, five thousand dollars. According to the opinions, it is possible for certain dispersments to meet the test of serving a public purpose under certain circumstances. Although such items will certainly be the subject of a deserved close scrutiny, the line to be drawn between proper and improper purpose is very thin. Our recommendation is though, we are not aware of any statutory authority for the city to donate public funds to non, private nonprofit organizations, the city should immediately cease making any further such donations. The city should determine and document the public first, preserved by these transactions prior to authorizing any further payments. And if this practice is continued, the city should establish written policies and procedures, including the requirements for the proper public purpose documentation. City's response was that they believe all these dispersments will meet the requirements of public purpose as defined in the attorney general's opinion, and they will document the public purpose served by these top, and dispersments and have it in place by July first, twenty twenty-two. Any questions?
Thank you, Jenny. That was very complete, very comprehensive, and thorough. We appreciate it. Any questions for Jenny while she's here?
My only question is, for several years, we've, this last portion that you talked about, we have, we have given to Carroll Area Childcare Center and those places for many years. Is this something new?
It is new.
I don't recall you bringing it up before.
Only because the current auditor of the state worked in the AG's office, and he's making it a point of contention. And he's bringing it up, and he's going to fight and make sure that everybody's dotting their i's and crossing their t's to make sure, prove to me that you can do the same thing. If you can't do the same thing, you can't give it to him. So it's, it's a very thin line, and you've got to walk that tight.
So we'd have to open up our own childcare center and food bank and?
In essence, you have to really document why it is a public purpose for Carroll. Extremely.
I would imagine there's many states or cities doing exactly what we're doing.
Yes, every one of us getting written up.
Yeah. County doing it. Is he going to go after every city?
I don't know whether he'll send you a letter and say, hey, give me the documentation, or I don't know what, what he's going to do, or whether this is just a warning. If you continue, then you might get more than a slap in the hand. I don't know. But he was very adamant last year. And I would imagine when I go back to governmental CPE with him there in May, he'll be bringing it up again, probably harder. I'll let you know.
Jenny, has he offered any specific guidance on the type of documentation?
No.
Is it a narrative? Is it?
No, he has not issued any guidance. He's basically saying, don't do it.
So, but nine times out of ten, when we talked about this and we talked to these folks, the reason that we were giving a portion was because they were needing a match from multiple people in order to prove that they needed the funds from state or federal. So, so who, I wonder who they're supposed to get the match from, if not from their cities and counties?
Individuals, I would imagine.
People in town who already pay the large bill.
Organizations.
Send their kids to daycare.
Yeah.
Okay.
The state auditor is very, very contentious of what municipal monies are being used for. So as I said, if he hits it and hits it harder this year, I'll let you know.
When did stimulus money come in? After June, after the last year's fiscal?
The ARPA stuff?
Yes.
Yes, the first, the first round came in August, and we're anticipating the second one this August. That's right, yep.
You'll see it next year.
Anything else for Jenny?
I would just add, kind of on this discussion we were having on the groups, external groups. You know, we are working on documenting that. They will be forwarded to council. And, and it is, it has been difficult because there's not great guidance. I would note that after the initial round came through, he did issue another opinion, which I think did help give a little bit more guidance and direction. But we're working through it, and certainly we as staff, and I know you guys as council, want to do what's legal and what's right. And then we're working through to dot our i's and cross our t's and make sure we're following that line. And we're, I know cities and counties across the state, and in our own county are working through this. I think we're all in it to, to, to do what's right with public funds in the end.
Anything to add, Laura? Okay. Jenny, thank you very, very, very much. Any other questions?
You have questions, you can leave me a message at the office. I'm only there six days a month now, so.
Got to pick the right days.
They'll forward the message.
Thank you, Jenny. Very good. We will move on to the next item on tonight's agenda. We have, under item six, there's ordinance, or no ordinances?
Should we maybe have a motion to accept the report?
Oh, I didn't, okay.
Yeah, sorry. I guess we've kind of done that in the past, yes.
I'm sorry. Yeah, so let's go ahead and do that. Let's, is there a motion to accept receipt of the, the?
Yes, yep, receive, receive the report, yes.
Is there a motion of that effect?
Second.
Tom, and there's second? Motion is second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Or Nero? Motion is approved.
Thanks, Laura.
Yes, thank you.
Item number six, under ordinance, that there are no ordinances to review tonight. Item number seven, resolutions. The first one is Street Restoration Project twenty twenty-two, a report of the proposal opening, and then following that, consideration for a resolution. I turn it over to Randy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On April nineteenth, one bid was received for the construction of the Street Restoration Project this year. That bid was received from Ten Point Construction in the amount of seven hundred, forty-eight thousand, thirty-four dollars and twenty-five cents. Based on that bid, the current project cost Based on that bid, the current project cost is estimated at $803,034.25. Funding for this project is proposed to be a combination of local option sales tax, the electric franchise fee, and a general, a small general obligation bond issuance for a total amount of $850,000. The project is planned for construction during this season to be completed by November 15th of 2022. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend your consideration of awarding the contract for the Street Restoration Project to Ten Point Construction Company at their bid price of $748,342.5.
Very good. Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy on this project? Okay, I don't have any either. The recommendation, again, is for the council to consider and pass approval of the resolution to Ten Point in the amount of $748,034.25. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, and once again, awarding the contract for Street Restoration 2022 Project to Ten Point Construction at their bid price of $748,034.25. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Ford Nero?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. We'll keep you on tap then, Randy. The next item is the wastewater treatment plant vertical loop reactor.
Thank you. We have received an engineering agreement from Veenster and Kim for, to design work for the replacement of the air piping to the vertical loop reactor at the wastewater treatment plant. The existing piping has been evaluated and is found to be leaking at the joints. Joints have deteriorated in that from the original construction. The scope of the agreement simply includes services needed to prepare plans to bring this project to bidding timeframe. And the compensation within the agreement includes $12,000 for the design work and $5,000 for services during construction, total of $17,000. And that's based on hourly fees as not to exceed maximum. During the preparation of the next fiscal year budget, it was recommended that funding in the amount of $20,000 be reestimated into the current fiscal year's budget for this design work. Construction work is anticipated to be in next fiscal year. So unless there are any questions, the recommendation is your consideration for approving the engineering agreement with Veenster and Kim for that vertical loop reactor air piping replacement at the wastewater treatment plant for not to exceed maximum fee of $17,000.
Thank you, Randy. Any questions for Randy on this project? Hearing none. You heard the recommendation to approve the resolution and award the contract for the wastewater treatment plant vertical loop reactor for a maximum not to exceed fee of $17,000. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Base?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Ford Nero?
Seaman?
Yes.
Shrek?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Thank you. One more.
One more.
Wastewater Treatment Plant, I'm not sure, anaerobic digester evaluation.
Yes, thank you.
Sounds like I know what I'm talking about, doesn't it?
You do.
All right. Good show.
We've also received an engineering agreement from Veenster and Kim for analysis or evaluation of the anaerobic digester at the wastewater treatment plant. This is proposed to evaluate the mechanical equipment and an alternative for going away from anaerobic digestion to aerobic digestion, the two separate processes. And that, that alternative is proposed simply because the current anaerobic digester mechanical equipment is in need of replacement, and it's very expensive to replace. So an evaluation, looking at maybe an alternative, life cycle costing, the whole thing, at this point is recommended. The scope within the agreement does include the review, the evaluation, and preparation of a report on that anaerobic digester and the alternative. There is included in the current budget an item for digester dome inspection in the amount of $11,000. This evaluation replaces that dome inspection, and it expands the scope of that work that was originally proposed. This agreement is an hourly, has an hourly fee not to exceed $23,800 for this evaluation. Based on the $11,000 that's currently budgeted, there may be a need later to amend additional funding into the budget to cover this project. Unless there are any questions, the recommendation is for your consideration to approve this engineering agreement with Veenster and Kim for the wastewater aerobic digester evaluation for not to exceed fee of $23,800.
Perfect. Thank you, Randy. Any questions on that item? Hearing none. You heard the recommendation, passage and approval of the resolution approving engineering agreement with Veenster and Kim, once again, for the wastewater treatment plant anaerobic digester evaluation for a not to exceed fee of $23,800. Is there a motion to that effect?
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
And seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirk?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ford Nero?
Yeah.
Base?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you, Randy. Item number eight tonight, under reports, the first item is a TIF rebate request for property located at 220 West 7th Street, otherwise known as the Villa. And we have representatives here tonight, but you want to give any overview first?
Yeah, thank you, Mark, members of the council. So this is a request from Brian and Holly Wendell and Jason and Karen, and I probably messed this up, but at her centon. They have requested the city to consider to provide a TIF rebate related to renovations for that property at 220 West 7th Street. This property is known as the Villa or the Hoyt Mansion. This property dates back to 1919, according to the Carroll County records. Now, the owners are requesting that the city provide a TIF rebate over a 10- or 15-year period at 100% of the increase in property value attributable to the renovation work that they will be completing on the property. The total rebate would then be capped at $250,000. Now, the current assessed value of the property is $209,210. In order to receive this full request of the $250,000, based on the current TIF consolidated tax rate and a 90% commercial property tax rollback, the building value would need to increase to approximately $1 million, $10,000 with a rebate period of 15 years to receive that full rebate. When the downtown urban renewal plan was updated in December of 2021, the following project was added to the plan specifically that the city expects to consider a grant program for interior building renovations for buildings constructed prior to 1940. The cost of such grants will not, are not expected to exceed $500,000. So the request, requested incentive would meet the project that was included in the urban renewal plan. Since this is the first project of this type, staff is requesting direction from the council on how to proceed with this request. Specifically, staff is requesting direction on the amount, the maximum amount of TIF rebate, and then also the number of years the rebate would extend, and then any other conditions the council would like to place on that. Staff would then work with the city's bond council to draft a development agreement that would be presented to the council for your consideration at future meeting. The city council this evening is requested to review and provide direction on how to proceed with a potential incentive, and I would note there's representatives here this evening to discuss this with the council. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions the council has this evening.
And in our packets, we also had a nice letter in there from the parties here that kind of outlined a little bit of the history and their plans moving ahead with the project that was included in our packet, and we've had a chance to review that as well. But either of you care to have an opportunity to address the council on any further details? And if you would, just state your names and addresses and so on.
Brian Wendell.
Jason Apperton. You almost got it right.
Right. Almost is good. Thank you.
Basically, we're asking, this wasn't bought as an investment. It's, it's, we're going to weigh more into it than what it's, what we're, that we'd be able to get a return off of. We're going to have close to $2 million into it. And we're just asking for that money for, to help assist.
The overall goal is to return something better back to the community that the community can use for years to come, whether our children take over it or whatever it may be. But that is our ultimate goal, is to return it back to its original state and the community. And so that's why we're requesting the TIF.
Which, sticking the money into it, you don't want to praise, because nobody wants a big building like that. Obviously, pressure it too. So, but it's, it's going, going smooth, and it, I think it's going to be an awesome building in the city.
And as we originally bought the building, I don't think we understood, I mean, we somewhat knew the, what we were taking on. However, as we removed more and more stuff, as any construction goes, it became a much larger venture than maybe we had originally intended on. And so that's why we're trying to request some assistance from the city to ultimately get us to produce a product that the city one will be proud of, and two, we can proudly represent us as well.
And we underestimated material costs too, which is obviously a lot.
Yes.
We feel your pain.
Are you guys renovating, like, every square inch of that building? Or is there some of it that will not be touched?
The couple origin, if you would know, the Kennedy Room. That's going to stay original, pretty much. The upstairs, four bedrooms, we're going to try to keep as much original as we can. But there, the walls are butchered so much that we have to, to a room to get completely brows taken down, the other two rooms, we're going to try to keep original.
Are they actually going to be used as, like, Airbnbs or rent?
That's the plan. The plan is to return it back, we have the original blueprints, is to return it back to the original blueprint of, as much as we can to represent that style of house or building, I guess.
The architectural firm that designed the house in 1919 is still in business, so we have all the original architectural designs, which costs us a lot of money because now we know what it's supposed to be like. We're trying to bring it back to that, that area, that state.
So yes, we are trying to turn the top rooms, maybe an Airbnb, or, I don't know if it'll go through Airbnb, VRBO, or whatever. Or it will be open to the public to rent, to use for, you have a family coming in for Christmas or whatever, to keep them located in one area versus different hotels throughout the city.
The old room is not going to be utilized. So far, is the ballroom upstairs, because there's no exit, there's no fire way to get out, so.
So that won't be touched at all?
Everything up there, as of now, unless we figure out a way to have an exit up there.
Spectres are a little bit more lenient, actually, than I assume.
It escapes me. How long has that been empty, or what we'd call unoccupied? I mean, just without any kind of enterprise in there whatsoever?
15 years ago, I think, is when it had the restaurant.
Has it been that long? Well?
A little longer, actually, when it had the restaurant.
Okay, and there wasn't anything in there after John Reglan had it? Was there something in there?
It was pretty at the moment that, the next year or so, with water and things of that nature, it was going to have to be destroyed, and so.
Structurally, the roof was, roof was leaking, needed tuck pointed. It's got issues, but we're, yeah, they're all good.
And it was, wall, the ceiling full of stuff, so you really couldn't see what was in there until we moved, I don't know how many truckloads of stuff out of it, to kind of get it to the point where we could evaluate what was exactly going on with the structure in the building, and it was salvageable, but.
In, in the, in the 50s, it was made into a hotel, and that's why we're, we're taking a lot of that stuff out to bring it back to the mansion, to the rooms. The staircase is being already done, it's supposed to have a big chandelier in the middle. So we're bringing that back, because we have the plans to see what it actually was in 1919.
Hopefully, you guys can go grab a coffee before we come here, right?
Yeah, I'd like to take a look at it sometime. I really would.
And stop over any time during the trip, check it out.
I might get put to work, so I'm trying to avoid it as far as possible. But, listen, I really hand you guys, tip my hat to you. I mean, it's, you know, that villa is a part of Carroll as much as Main Street or anything else. And so I really, really, really admire what you're doing. And, you know, I for one would, you know, certainly advocate, you know, that we try and participate at some level. I just don't know, it's up to the council to decide to what extent that may be. But I really, really admire you guys for doing that. And, you know, there's always that moment that, you know, you think, oh my, what did we get ourselves into? And I'm sure you've experienced that a number of times, and, and so that's why you're here. But is, a question about jobs has come up, and, you know, I, I for one, you know, not viewing it solely particularly on number of job creations or anything like that, because it certainly has a historical preservation value to it, perhaps more so than what employment would offer. But do you have any kind of idea right now? And, and then as ideas evolve and, you know, encompass, but what kind of, can we count on X number of jobs in there once you're operational?
Don't know for sure. My daughter Kaylee is going to have a coffee shop, and there's, there's nine rooms roughly after that. Esthetician, a salon, they have petty chairs, they're going to do nails, and that, and the wing. Possibility of a jewelry store that.
Yeah, we'll hire an employee, an Airbnb.
But, but as, no, we don't know.
Okay. I know it's kind of a hard question, but as the council considers it.
Maybe a bar, as much as, nobody wants to marry a bar. So we're kind of, we're kind of like a martini lounge kind of thing or something like that.
Occasionally, or.
Occasionally, or, yes.
Something like that.
Okay.
But we don't know. Or we'll rent it out to people, do you use, rent the, the main room?
For an event space.
Yes. But as of now, in May, my daughter's going to have, I think, three or four of the rooms are already rented for businesses.
This May?
Yes.
Oh, my.
But it's, they're going to come in from the rear entry, the courtyard's going to take a long time.
Okay. That's aggressive. That's great. Any questions that the council has?
I don't have questions, but I think we're so fortunate that this, they have taken on this project, and let alone jobs. It will be a magnet for our downtown area. And I truly believe we will gain so much more in economic activity than we could possibly do when we have this capped at $250,000. I think it's phenomenal, and we should leap at this. And I think it's going to really, our partnering through this, I, I, I hope other people see opportunities in downtown, and, and, and we can say we stepped up to do something really positive for, for not just you, but this for Carroll. We'll gain way more than the $250,000 cap. And if they need 10, 15 years, I, I think this is a great opportunity.
I look at, I look at this as a tourism attraction. Have you done anything with the Iowa Tourism Committees? I mean, you might be able to get some funding through that. Barry would know some of that stuff, wouldn't you? Out of your league? It's not a baseball field.
Like, maybe like a cat grant?
I don't know. I just, you know, you might want to check with the Chamber or something, you know? Because they're, they would use this as a, as a tourism tool, too, the Chamber and Commerce, and, and, you know.
In the historical.
Yeah, I think there's other avenues you probably haven't looked at yet on this.
And when we looked into that, like bringing back the plaster, back to, it was so expensive. I mean, we'd have three, four, five, I had a guy from Omaha come out and look at it, and he said it'd be over 10.
And also, the time on it is that every step of the way of the historic society, they have to come in, and they have to approve, it's just the time of it, of its.
So you have looked at.
You must get a yes, and then you got to go through procedures.
So you've looked at all that?
Yes.
Okay.
And we're trying to bring back as much wood and keep it as much original, but any time you save something, a board or a door, it costs more than a brand new, nice one. It just, it's a.
And we just brought back, me and my wife just did the Kelly House, built in 1915, so the caliber of work that we want to do is somewhat equivalent to that, and so it's woodwork, deal with the woodwork and stuff like that, so.
Mike, I just had a question for you. The one sentence on here says that it's the, kind of the first project of this type, but, I mean, a few of us know that we've done TIF like this for, like, biokinometrics and whatnot. So can you, can you explain maybe even just for the public or others to understand, why would you consider this the first project of its type compared to some of the other?
Good, great question, actually. So if you recall back to the biokinometrics agreement, that was a 15-year agreement capped at $350,000, tied specifically to job creation. When we amended the urban renewal plan, and that was based on economic development under urban renewal law, when we amended the urban renewal district for this type of project, and there was a couple other reasons we amended the urban renewal plan, we had got to this point where we're presenting here tonight, but when we did this last fall, we included this property in the plan as a slum and blight district, so we created a district for it. So it's not being done for economic development purposes, and additionally, under slum and blight, you can offer economic development, or you can offer grants, not economic development, but grants for interior building renovations when it's slum and blight and not tied jobs. So it's a little bit different criteria, and that's why I guess I'm calling it kind of the first of its kind that we've considered. It's permitted in state statute allowable, just we have not offered it previously in Carroll.
Well, what direction would the council like to go on this? Do you want to just take it as a discussion item now and consider it in an upcoming future meeting, or do you want to take action on it yet tonight? What is your wishes?
I'm, I'm ready to act on it. I, I think we should jump at this. If we legally can.
Yeah, and I guess the, the two questions I specifically had asked and called out was, is there, you know, what dollar amount do you want to offer? They have, they've requested $250,000. The number of years of the rebate, they, they requested 10 or 15 years, and then I have heard tonight, possibility maybe you want to tie it to jobs. Not required, but it'd be an option. So I guess, once we kind of get those questions answered, we'll go back and work, work with bonding council to develop a development agreement that'll be brought back to the council, it'll be a public hearing on that development agreement, and the council can consider action on it. So we're just kind of looking for those blanks at this point, is where we're at in the process.
I know there was a question brought up, whether or not, you know, we're kind of looking at the top end value at just over a million dollars in order to accommodate, make room for the 250, and there's maybe some question about whether or not the assessor feels comfortable that it would reach that point or not, and so.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, as city staff, we talked with Cindy down at the assessor's office and asked, you know, what do they expect, what does she expect the value to be, and we received anywhere from 400 to 500,000. I know you guys had some direct conversations with Vanguard, who, who does that?
What it assesses for.
Yep.
Will not be equivalent to what we have into it.
Oh, right, oh, yeah, we get that, oh, yeah.
They don't assess for much.
Yeah.
Right.
But I know, I, I talked to one of your wives about this, and they, they had a conversation with Vanguard, which is.
Eight hundred to a million.
Yep, that's, that's what she had relayed to me. And so, you know, the way this is structured is, if it, if it doesn't assess out, they're only going to get the increase in the value.
Yeah, you guys get, kind of understand?
Yes.
If it only gets so far.
If it assesses for 600, it'll be half of that.
Right, it might not be the full 250,000.
Yes.
That you've asked, so.
And that's, that's a part of it, is that the tax increase could hurt what we have the future, 10 years from now, what, what, what we can do with it.
Sure.
To upkeep and, and keep everything the way it's supposed to be. If it's, if the taxes are extremely high, or it'll make a, make a difference.
Right. It's all part of it.
Yes.
And the other thing to, to keep in mind in all this, too, is as, the train left there for a second, I had a, if you're, I apologize. You said something, and then it.
I'm sorry, was it regarding the increment?
No, it's the, they will continue to pay, so when you pay your taxes, there are certain portion of your property taxes that would not get rebated. This is where I was going to go. So there's the debt service at the school, county, and city, those will still get paid, and the school has the PEPLO levy, that will still get paid, and so.
Taxes, correct.
On, on, on even the increment.
Yes.
And so they won't get the full property tax bill repaid to them, so you also have to keep that in mind, and we've talked about that.
Yes, absolutely.
Do you have any preference on 10 or 15 years?
It doesn't matter, whatever we're selling, you guys.
Really, whatever you guys feel comfortable with.
I feel 15, if it doesn't raise high, we need 15.
Okay.
Yeah.
I mean, if it doesn't, well, either way, I think 15 years, I don't know, 10 years or 15.
I'm fine with that.
Yep. 15 gives them time to realize their potential, and I, I don't see that, for me, that we need to tie it to jobs. It sounds like they're going to be entrepreneurs in there creating small businesses, so it's a little bit different than the biokinometrics. It's not like they're hiring, there will be some employees, but that's not the business model, is I understand it, correct? I mean, with what your daughter's doing. Okay, thank you.
Down the road, this is going to be on the tax.
Yeah.
You know, but anyway, so.
Yeah.
Credit to them, I think we should, we should reward them a little bit for what they're doing for a delay on that. All we're doing is delaying it.
It's going to be done this year.
Yeah.
With the whole budget.
Yeah, you heard it. You want to move forward then, if there's a motion to that effect?
I, I will make that motion to move forward with the 250, $250,000 cap for 15 years.
250,000.
250, what did I say?
150, you said 150.
Oh, 250, I'm sorry.
I'll second that, 250,000 for 15 years.
Very good. We have a motion and a second to move forward with a plan to rebate for up to 15 years in an amount not to exceed 250,000. Any further discussion? Hearing non, roll call, please.
Ford Nero?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Streck?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Face?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
So I'm going to guess it'll be probably, probably two, two meetings from now, maybe a month from now, maybe six weeks from now, we'll get the development agreement. There's some public hearing timing we'll have to work through, but I'll, I'll let you know when that happens, okay?
Thank you again, congratulations and Godspeed.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Okay, the next item under reports, item B, is Carroll Merchants Park Destination Iowa Grant Opportunity, and Chad, you want to lead it off?
So after discussion with the Iowa High School Athletic Association and Carroll Athletic Association, the city has recognized several areas of Carroll Merchants Park that are needing enhancement to continue to provide a high level of fan and player experience during the state tournaments and regular play. These would include press box improvements and expansions, removal and replacement of existing aluminum bleachers to a raised ADA accessible bleacher, dugout expansion, protective netting down first and third baselines, new lighting and replacing the outfield vents and windscreen. Many of these are included in the drawings, provided. Total estimated cost of improvements is right around 921,800. The state of Iowa announced the Destination Iowa Grant Program. The program will provide a total of 100 million in grant opportunities to bolster the quality of life in Iowa's communities and attract visitors and new residents to the state. The Destination Iowa Grant Opportunity allows selected projects to receive 40% of eligible project costs. If this project is still important to the city and city stat, or city staff is recommending we apply for 368,720 of the Destination Iowa under their outdoor recreation category to make improvements to Merchants Park. As of right now, the Carroll Athletic Association has tentatively committed to providing a total of 100,000, leaving a total of 453,080, or just under 50% of the total overall project cost. The city, with the assistance of Region 12, Carroll Athletic Association, will continue to work to secure additional funding, whether through grants or donations for this project. However, the grant will require the city to show 60% of the project costs are in place when the grant application is actually submitted. So the staff has identified and suggested either using local option sales tax or American Rescue Plan Act available funds could be used as the city's match. Our recommendation is that the mayor and city council, excuse me, discuss and review the funding request for Merchants Park enhancement project.
Very good. Thank you, Chad. Chris, would you like to approach council, or are you just there for moral support?
Answer any questions.
Okay. Barry?
Asking an attorney to get up and speak.
Well, it's, it's hazardous, but I got, I got one to my left that'll litigate, so.
Don't tell where you're from. Don't forget.
The other one.
Don't be too old. Chris has all the answers, and I, I do want to thank Region 12 Council of Governments for really helping us put a face on this grant program. 10 years ago, we basically restored Merchants Park as much as we could at the time. We've had the state baseball tournament here for 10 years, and then it came back last summer, and it is an amazing process. If you haven't worked, come down and work. Dave, Dave really organized the state baseball tournament. People love Carroll, and they think of Merchants Park when they think of Carroll. It's time, though. The state wants us to do these projects that Chad already talked about, and he, we need that to maintain the state tournament, we have it for four years, and from what we can gather, it could be a permanent thing. Major League Baseball apparently isn't interested in having them visit their principal park in Des Moines. The state baseball, or the state athletic association loves Carroll, talk to them when they're here, they love walking out, they love the people of Carroll working it, and they, as you stand out there after those games, they, they thank you. And the team, I forget the team that wasn't real excited about coming to Carroll, Dave South at Des Moines. Do you remember that dress?
Fan beater.
Fan beater. Yeah, they wanted to play at, at Merch, at Principal Park, and they were kind of mad about having to come, you know, out to Western Iowa to, to play baseball. So they walk in with one attitude, and they walked out. Man, woman, child, shortstop, loved it here, and they made it known to Carroll. So anyway, we got a great project, we hope that you'll consider it, we've got great opportunities during this time, and we'll take a crack at it. Carroll Athletic Association started 75 years ago, and they're still here working this project. Bill Farner and his crew, and punchboards, and all that sort of story that you'd love to, I don't have time to tell them all, but, anyway, thank you very much for considering this great, great project. It'll pay dividends for years.
Barry, you had just mentioned four years. I haven't heard four years yet. I've heard three years.
Three?
Last year.
Last year. Including last year. Yeah, okay.
Okay, three more years.
Three more years. And I, I think this would really show how excited we are to have them. Any other shots? Chris will answer the real questions. And see, shaking his head. Anything else? Thank you very much.
Thank you, Barry. Any other questions for Chad or anybody on this topic? The council's looking for recommendation, or the staff is looking for council's recommendation to review, discuss the funding request, and, you know, I credit all the work that those guys have done down there, I mean, it's just amazing, and, you know, I, I look and see what they're doing over in Dyersville, and see if we can get, you know, somebody to move, a lot of Cubs fans here, so, be really, really cool, but to get a long-term deal with state baseball would be, you know, the ultimate goal, I think, you know, besides what it does for the schools and merchants and so on. So, how does everybody feel? We, we, we got to talk about the funding request itself, how we're going to fund it, if so, if that's the council's prerogative. We've talked about local option sales tax. Mike, it would be redundant for you and me, but I mean, just share a little bit discussions that we've had. I, I just had concerns that we're, we're taxing that fund, you know, quite a little bit, you know, we're bringing in about 1.9 a year, we typically budget for about 1.7, you know, say what you want about concerns about impending recessions and things like that, but, you know, with the rec center project going, plus a few other umbilical cords we already have to it, that was just a question that I had for Mike, and you were going to add a little bit more detail on that.
Yeah, it's a good discussion, and, you know, obviously, we know, we're anticipating, no, no, like, we're anticipating the rec center projects. We, we have projections, we've reviewed those during the budget process, and anticipating that, you know, some debt payments would come out of local option sales tax for the rec center project, in addition to the million dollars that we've set aside over time in local option sales tax for that project. There are, there is some availability now, fiscal year 2020, 2040, it is a little bit limited, it'd be about 181,000 that would be available. By the time it gets to the end of fiscal year 2024, there's 483,796. Now, that's, I don't know, a local option sales tax. Now, hotel motel, it's a really, it's a lot smaller fund, you know, we only receive about 205,000 there. There are, in fiscal year 2023, there's 38,000, that will grow in available balance to 97,000. So you could take some dollars out of hotel motel. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, Chris, but we have through fiscal year 2026 to expend the money if we were awarded, and that's only part of the story, because we also have state baseball, and we have to.
I knew Barry couldn't explain this all correctly. Again, Chris Whitaker, Region 12 Council of Governments, again, that's, that 60% local commitment is required at the time of application. I think within, you know, by the time that application opens, May 9th, I would like to have that application on somebody's desk at Economic Development that week, that ensures the best, best opportunity for funding. I think within another, by the time the council meets on, I think it's on May 9th, that package could be much, I don't want to say much better, but better than 60%. It should be less for the city. You know, Barry's been out talking to some people today to make a really good competitive application, similar to the community attraction and tourism process, you know, we've, we've talked to the county preliminary, both school districts, the Athletic Association, we've identified a number of grant opportunities as well, that the Athletic Association believes we can go access over the next six months to a year. The timing's not ideal for any of them, but especially to meet that May deadline. But, you know, again, two years that, yeah, two years to have that committed, or three, I guess, till 27, so it's a long window, but the opportunity is there. The thing that I, you know, I've, I've done this a long time, the programs that have been around for 20-plus years, they're easy to, easy to know, easy to guess, because we know what they fund. New programs, they can have 200 million dollars of applications down there on May 10th, we don't know. That really happened with that EDA application. Our project wasn't big enough, had five times more requests than money. Our project wasn't big enough, had five times more requests than money. So that's where it's at.
Perfect. And then can we just briefly summarize and outline for the council? There's essentially three levels of priorities. You know, improvements that want to be made there, press box, ADA compliant bleachers, lighting.
Sure.
Yeah, if you wouldn't mind.
Priority A, and I think this is really identified more by the Iowa High School Athletic Association for for state baseball. Priority A, and I'll call these A, B, and C, really press box improvements and expansion, the ADA bleacher improvements. As you know, if you sit in row one on those bleachers, you're not going to see very much, especially if you're on the first baseline besides the back of the dugout. Netting, which would extend all the way past the bleachers. Priority B would be dugout expansion. I call it widening, which would go further into the field, lighting, and then item C is fencing around the outfield.
We have a little bit of a floor plan and a map in here that we can kind of understand Perfect. What other questions? He's he's up here. How's the chance?
You got me. Barry got me up here.
Barry got him up here. Any questions for Chris?
I think the only thing I would add, and you know, we have some time. We definitely have time to do it. I think one of the things that we're, if we want to be competitive for future state baseball, you know, the conversations we've had is we know we'll have this summer and next summer, then at the end of sometime in the winter of twenty twenty-three, state baseball intends to be in negotiation by another contract extension. Their expectations during our conversations we had this past winter, they would want to see some of these improvements. They want to see progress.
That's what I see.
You know, so, yeah, we really have a longer window to expend the money, but there is somewhat of a time constraint. If state baseball is important, we'll be.
I'm looking at the hotel motel tax. You're worried about the local option sales tax. I think there's some things aren't here that we could discuss or delay if we prioritize this, too.
And there certainly is. I I'm less concerned about local option sales tax personally. I think we have some room in there. It's going to take some navigation through it. And certainly, if you augment it with some out of hotel motel, some out of local option sales tax, you know, that's that's going to help the situation. But, you know, some some items like some of the future trailies, you know, those could be delayed, and that.
And there's still our. Three years we got to pay for all this, right?
Well.
We have to allocate it.
You're gonna have to.
Committed now.
Yeah, committed, but you got three years to pay it.
Well, in reality, if you're gonna do the projects, you know, when state baseball, you have a lot of year and a half.
Okay.
But they need our commitment in order to recognize our grant. I mean, so there is urgency to jump on this.
And again, this is preliminary discussion unless you hate the idea totally, but May ninth is to say when you really, to me, endorse the application, you'll see the the final numbers, the sources of funds, and then we'll see what happens. Might not get funded. I mean, I kind of don't want to talk about that, but I mean, it's always reality.
It's a possibility, sure.
You know, it's a game.
Right.
And then we reevaluate, you know, and go from there, so.
Well, some of these, you know, your list, A, B, or C, need to be done in city facilities. So I mean, it's, you know, no different than, you know, anything else. So I mean, I'll take the council's direction on how you want to proceed.
We need to move forward and help this along.
Are you good with the amount?
Chad, are we having to look at new lights anyway?
Yes.
And that's two hundred and some thousand?
Yes. That was the last estimate we got.
Because we've talked about those things are those things are rusting out, and we need to address it anyway. We talked about this a while back.
Yep.
And to be clear on the lights, the structures are in fair condition. There's gonna need to be some, there's gonna need to be some work on them. There's some bolts that are missing that'll have to be repaired.
They're not they're not going to fail anytime soon. It's really the light heads, the fixtures themselves, that will be replaced under this.
I guess what I'm getting at is we got to plan some money for this anyway. So, you know, what that dollar is, I don't know for sure, but the must go is two hundred. So, you know, out of the four hundred and fifty-three, you're already looking at two hundred thousand that we would probably need to do regardless if we did any of this for baseball or not. So your overrun is two hundred and fifty thousand instead of.
Actually, sure.
Yeah. And I don't know about the dugouts. That's just for state?
I think it's actually for any users. I mean, just what we hear even from the high school is there's just not a lot of depth there, and so it's just hard for people to get in and out of them. So, you know, it's one of those things, when we did the improvements a few years ago, we probably should have looked at that a little bit closer to make that depth. You know, the netting, again, it's a safety issue, and you were seeing a lot of ballparks that are that are improving that netting just from a safety and liability standpoint. And the bleacher improvement, you know, we added ADA spots. I'll tell you what, I'm down there, especially with merchants baseball. There are times where every one of the spaces are filled, and they're filled with wheelchairs. And so companions can't be sitting next to their relatives that are actually having to sit around there. So what what the bleachers additions do also is we'll create additional ADA spaces for them to take in the game and enjoy it, which everyone wants. You know, so you start going through, and the fencing again is one of those things where, you know, we're having failures with the the windscreen that's on the outfield. I mean, if you walk up and really look at it, you'll you'll notice very quickly that it's in deteriorated form, and then the fence itself, it's less than ideal. I don't know what the age of that fence is, but it but it's problematic. So again, it's addressing these kind of long-term maintenance issues that we've had out there. So other than maybe the press box, which is probably the only item that is truly, really only state baseball used, even even at that, you have competitive merchants baseball, you have high schools, it gives a better place for press, even locally to use. I think the radio station would probably agree with that. He's looking down, taking notes. Pretty interesting.
That's a question for Blankman, right?
Yeah.
Long depart. How many years did you sign up for the MICK League? Did you sign?
That's an annual.
One year at a time.
Yep.
Okay.
But you're in the MICK League forever. I mean, until you pull out, correct?
Well, one of the ways you got to look at it is this, you know, we're having more professional type baseball coming. So that's another activity that the people in the town can go see and do. You know, we're kind of like a parks thing, you know, so we're, you know, with this, we're supplying some entertainment for the people in this area with that coming. And, you know, how much money do we spend on trails and, you know, other things in the city? You know, just to have things for the people and the public to do. I guess, you know, I'm just trying to justify this four hundred and fifty-three million or thousand.
It's a nice ballpark.
Yeah, that would be a nice ballpark.
Well, it's a long-term investment, right? And if we had to do the lights and other things anyway, it's would need to get done and do a little more and hopefully get the state baseball long-term.
Yeah, I would agree to that.
I also agree. It's for long-term commitment. Part of the grant that we're looking for with this whole process, it's a small price to find how to get that money to get the long-term effect for it. Merchants, it's a nice attraction. State baseball, it's nice to have it back, be nice to keep it and continue to keep it forever if we could.
And I will add that the Iowa High School Athletic Association is writing us a letter of support for this grant as well. I mean, obviously, Carroll Athletic Union, the city, and state baseball have all identified some of these concerns or enhancements that are needed just to try and keep everything here. So we're happy to have their full support on this as well.
May ninth, and it'd be putting our best foot forward, so how would you like to proceed then, council? Would you, is there, the motion would be to at least proceed? Do we want to sketch out? We have funding sources identified, but do we want to firm that up yet tonight, or is that for discussion before May ninth? Or can that actually even occur? We'd be committing the four fifty-three, but I feel a little uncomfortable without knowing exactly how we're going to pay for it yet, or at least have a general idea.
I would say is let's not commit, you know, we'll work with Chris, and and as that application comes forward and we get more firm numbers, we'll move that, and then we'll identify potential sources again for your May ninth meeting. And then when you pass resolutions, you'll you'll be able to make that, get those commitments.
Is that good?
I mean, I guess one of the questions I would ask, I mean, just what are the potential sources you would want to consider? I don't think we need to lock down dollar amounts, but, you know, do you want, do you want it to be out of local option sales tax and hotel motel? Do you want to consider ARPA? I mean, is there guidance from that perspective the council has?
If you've got confidence in that local option sales tax, I would like that to, my opinion solely, would be, you know, to make it at least the majority of it at the very least, and then, you know, consider augmenting it with hotel motel, which we already know isn't very much, but then we still haven't touched the ARPA yet, but we also may have some infrastructure use for that, too. So council, you have anything that you'd like to? Again, Mike's confident that the local option sales tax would support it, but, and I was the one that raised the question, so.
It's a good question. It's a very good question.
So there's at least, there's there's three and only three, because I don't think we have a whole lot of appetite for.
I think you need to put all three of them in.
Yeah. A mix of the three, but leaning heavily on lost. Okay.
Does that answer your question clear as mud?
Yeah, I think we have the direction we need for tonight. I mean, I don't think we need a motion. We'll move forward with the discussion we had this evening. I think mainly we wanted this evening because it's a big, big dollar amount, big commitment that the next meeting, you're not just presented with a resolution without knowing much about it.
Okay.
Great.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay, well, let's conclude that. Thank you, gentlemen. Okay, we are at item eight C, which is Pleasant Ridge, Pleasant Ridge Road, Timberline Road sidewalk issue discussion. I know we've got several people in attendance that are interested in this item, and I'll turn it back over to Randy, I believe.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Sidewalk connecting Timberline to Pleasant Ridge was one of your new initiatives coming out of the planning session in November of twenty-one. As a result of that initiative, the budget for next fiscal year included or includes fifteen thousand dollars for design of that sidewalk. The capital improvement plan indicates that design, of course, in next fiscal year and then construction in the following fiscal year. We've included a drawing with your information that illustrates a proposed sidewalk to be located along the north side of Pleasant Ridge Road from its existing, the existing sidewalk on the east to the west side of Hidden Valley, and then the west side of Hidden Valley Road from Pleasant Ridge Road to the south side of Timberline Road, and then along Timberline Road, the southerly side, from where the sidewalk currently ends past Main Street on to Hidden Valley, or to Hidden Valley Road, yes. And then we've also illustrated an alternative sidewalk that was mentioned or an alternative location along Hidden Valley, or excuse me, along Timberline from Hidden Valley West to Prairie Ridge Drive. And so that would complete the sidewalk construction in that area. So those are just proposals. The reason it's brought up at this point in time, based on the bidding experience that you just saw in the concrete work on the full-depth patching street restoration project, there wasn't a lot of interest in bidding concrete work. We don't know if a standalone sidewalk project would generate interest in bidding. We haven't had a lot of good fortune in doing that, but we do now, as of tonight, you have a contractor under contract for the street restoration project. He may be interested in building this project if it were ready to go. So that's kind of the reason it came up at this point in time, but we're looking, the staff is looking for direction from the council on how and if you want to proceed with this sidewalk project, and that's really the gist of it. So I'd be happy to answer any questions that I can tonight.
Thanks, Randy. I'd have a question about what you just said about having had a whole lot of luck getting bids, and and I guess I wasn't aware of that, that with all these guys that are, you know, advertising, you know, doing concrete work and driveways and pads and everything else, they're not interested in sidewalks? Is that kind of what you're saying?
Well, I don't know if they would be, and I was just basing it on our other bids that we've received. And of course, in in public work, you have to provide bonding, and, you know, it's it's a little, I mean, the costs are a little higher, and the hoops you have to jump through are a little more. So some concrete flatwork people just don't care to do that. You know, the business is good without going through those hoops. Some will may bid it. We just don't know. But we didn't have much luck bidding concrete patching on our streets. We got one bid.
Okay. And then is that the same hold true for why, you know, it requires like engineering services rather than, all right, I'm going to build a house and I'm going to, you know, it's going to require a sidewalk, and, you know, the contractor just lays it in there and done, and there's no design services or anything, he just lays it in? So is it same thing apply to that?
Yes, at this project cost, the state code would require you to go through a design and bidding for it.
Due to cost, the comprehensive, the size of it this year?
Yes.
Okay. And you couldn't just piece it together or not recommend it?
Even at piecing together, you may want to have an overall design first.
Okay.
So you know where it should be constructed.
I just want to add to to Randy's description of the where the sidewalks would be constructed on the very west end of Timberline, where there's the T where it meets Prairie View Drive. There is already on the south side of Timberline, some sidewalk that extends the depth of one lot. So it was started on the west side of Timberline, but never was carried further past the the two other homes that exist on the south side. So there's now we have this gap between where it curves and then where it was start on the east end and where it was it was begun on the west side of Timberline. Whenever, I don't know when when that happened, was that when Prairie View was developed?
Actually, that was a requirement for sidewalk in that Rolling Hills South subdivision.
Okay.
And that was. And that was by subdivision agreement.
Right, right.
But there was no, or is no requirement in the development of the Woodland Heights subdivision, which is the one east of there for sidewalk, and that's the reason it's not there along Timberline.
Okay, thanks.
Am I looking at this right? Does it show that there's going to be like fifteen properties that are going to be affected by that?
I didn't, I didn't count the properties, but, but if that's what it is.
In total?
Yeah, about.
Like if you did all, all three streets, is that what you're saying?
Yeah.
I have, I've had over eleven people come tell me they don't want them, so a good majority of people don't want this sidewalk. So I guess looking at this from my point is, if we don't want it, it wasn't there, why would we want to put it there, especially with taxpayer dollars? That's my question. And I'll ask the rest of you too also. A good majority of people don't want this sidewalk.
I guess the other thing that I would, I would raise is a question is there's other places in town, in my opinion, that are a little more, pose a little more danger to people that use sidewalks or streets to walk? That why would, making this one a priority over, say, High Ridge Road between Woodland and fifteenth street, twelfth street, sorry?
Or if I purchased this property, I sure wouldn't want somebody to come back two, five, ten years later and say, hey, you need to put a sidewalk in it, when you didn't want a sidewalk in the first place, so.
Yeah, I think the people who are used to the status quo do not want to change and add a sidewalk for whatever reason, Tom. I'm going to add some context, and I have some photos of what's going on on Pleasant Ridge and the huge amount of traffic. And if you look back to about the sixth picture, we are, Pleasant Ridge is now the bypass for Highway thirty going from seventy-one to Grant Road and even further out to the road, the Dedham Road. If you go north, you're at the country club. And what has happened, and I brought this up before, is when some of these houses were first built, it was a very different atmosphere. And now we have that whole high density. I mean, there have been a lot of changes in the area. And people like the status quo, I get it. They want to keep their, you know, lawns the way they are. But a multitude of people have talked to me who don't live in those homes, but they use the streets, they walk in the yards of these people. They, there are a multitude of homes that have been built to the west. And if you, this map is worth a thousand words, like a picture. You look at the size of the lots of the people on Timberline, and then you look at the high density of the lots along Prairie View. We have a lot going on in a small amount of space. And if you look at the depth of the lots moving east on Prairie View, you'll see that they're two acres, except the corner lot, which is around two thirds of an acre. And you look at the, how dense the trees are, it's, they have beautiful backyards. They have a lot of space. And you look at the depth of those yards and then look over at Prairie View and those lots, it's high density housing, many people, many recreators, and they're coming from that direction down Hidden Valley. And then some of them go on to catch, to go around the curve to catch the sock rail trail that way. So they use Timberline. And a lot of them are coming from the west and using Hidden Valley to go on Pleasant Ridge where I live. That, these trucks are all on Pleasant Ridge. They go, I mean, I hear them in the morning and they're lit up like Christmas trees about three in the morning. But they continue all day, off and on all day, at dozens every day. These are just a few examples of what is going on Pleasant Ridge. And if you notice about six back, you'll see a guy walking on the sidewalk in front of our house and a huge truck going by behind him. And so people are, you know, we have a sidewalk to the edge, the west edge of our lot, but there's no sidewalk to continue on, to take the people off the street and get them to either back to their homes to the west, or if they're heading to go toward the park. Kids drive, ride their bikes to get to the park. They're walking, they're pushing baby carriages. I've been, I've had to stop as I've driven to the east to take that curb while someone was walking, both their dogs, they were in a V, and I stopped. They took the whole lane up until they could get to the sidewalk to go around the Hawkup Curve. Now, it isn't jam packed with people, but there are many, many safety risks because of the high density and many houses, many people, many cars, many bikes. Kids just out having fun, going down to the park to shoot baskets. And I think if you look at this map very closely, you'll see there are four homes heading east on Timberline. And by the way, the people on my street do not mind at all. They want this sidewalk, and they would like to see it continued on Hidden Valley. And further, so people have a safe route to the park, to the trail. And yes, people live in the homes, Tom. I understand why they don't want to upset the status quo. But there are hundreds of people in this area, and many have talked to me, I don't even know their names. When are we going to get a sidewalk? When are we going to put safety first? And I believe safety is a quality of life issue. And people in my neighborhood, they have had it. And their kids go and play and go off to the west into Prairie View to get to other kids' houses. And it really is a mess in this whole area as far as intermittent safety issues that, I think I agree with Hawkup, he said, it's not, it's not a matter of if, it's when. We're going to have some problems. And I live there, I'm on that street every day. I see the people walking by and heading toward Hidden Valley. They're probably going west. It's, it's a very congested area with many vehicles. And as you can see, the trucks, the ag businesses, et cetera. So I thought we were wise to make this a priority because of so many factors. And I don't see how we can lose keeping this neighborhood safe. And as I've said before, and I've asked Randy, sidewalks are built in the public right of way, not on people's private property. And if they have planted trees in the right of way, Randy, they own the tree. But who controls the, what happens to the trees when it's on public land? Who controls that decision? The person who planted the tree or the public?
The city code requires that the person on the property adjacent to that, if the tree's in public right of way, maintain the tree. In the case of a public purpose needed for the right of way, then the public, the city can remove the tree if necessary.
For a public purpose, yeah, yeah.
Yes, well, utility construction, sidewalk construction, street construction, whatever is needed in the right of way.
Okay. So we have dense population, we had the addition of the sock trail, which is drawing people. We also have a lot of people going to work at McFarland Clinic, which makes this area, it can be congested. Another factor is there, it has become a main arterial street, Timberline. And because there is no exit from this area out onto seventy-one, so they're using, a lot of people are using Timberline to get to Maine and get to wherever they're going. So a lot of stuff, a lot of activity and growth and construction has happened since these people, you know, originally brought their, bought their lots. But these lots are huge compared to the other lots in the area. Three of them are two acres, one is two thirds of an acre, it's evident here. And I get they want to keep the natural, you know, the nature, et cetera. But that's all in their backyard. And as you can see, the, it's very undisturbed, very beautiful. They would not lose that. And they have beautiful homes. And I, I know, I remember when we built our house in ninety-three, you came and told us what we had to do to build a five foot wide sidewalk and the angle, et cetera, in case a sidewalk was built moving west. And we were happy to do that, we paid for it. I know we received an email from Jeff about this, and I don't disagree with him on that. So, but thanks for your answer.
Any other comments from the council?
I have, I just have a couple of questions. I don't, I don't know if there's any way, but can the, can the truck and farm traffic be stopped? Is there anything that you can do to, to not let them route that way?
I asked that very question, and the only way you can do it, I'll let you, but only by weight.
Okay.
And then it would require a scale, right?
And even that, the enforcement of having somebody down there to enforce it all the time would be almost impossible.
Yeah.
We can't do a thing, Misty. I've been bugging the chief for a couple of years because I get calls constantly, can't you stop it? The noise, the breaks, the everything. And we, we just, as you said, JJ, yeah, just, it's not feasible. So it's going to continue.
But there's, there's no way that we can mark, like, there's another preferred truck route, which would be the other highway over that would lead over to Swan Lake and then down Grant?
Is there a truck route with sign marked on that road branch?
I don't believe so.
No.
I just wondered.
Yeah, I also asked the question about just posting no trucks, but then, you know, what's a truck anymore? And a pickup, a crew cab, a one ton?
I just was curious.
And there's people that probably have them that live on that street, but I asked the same question.
Yep, go ahead, but then I have another question.
It really is, it's an enforcement issue. We don't have a scale, so we'd have to, if we had a violator, we'd have to escort them to a scale. If we can get permission to use their scale, there's, we're aware of one certified scale in Carroll. And then once you sign it and you set up the expectation that there's going to be no trucks, it really does become an issue where, once a truck goes down there, the public has an expectation, we're going to be down there to deal with it. And to be honest, we have a lot of other issues in the community that really are a higher priority. So it's just really setting up that community expectation. Then you have the issue of, okay, no trucks, now all of a sudden, someone wants to move, so the moving van shows up. Well, there's no trucks allowed, sorry. And so you have an issue with that. So it just, it's a real complex issue, there's no easy solution. I think you really, you're setting up for failure.
I get it, I just, I was asking if there was ever a way to just even, like I said, to market preferred truck route that they could go a different way, but you could try to suggest. My other question was, I feel like I maybe should have asked this before, a while ago, because, you know, we have all those different pricing and alternatives and whatnot. But is there any way to just come out of Prairie View Drive directly south to Pleasant Ridge? Like through an area here where we wouldn't be going all the way down the middle road? Where we couldn't just come so that they could get to Pleasant Ridge and go down? And, do you know what I'm saying?
Let me pull up a different map here, so give me a second.
I'm just thinking, I understand the people coming out over by Prairie View Drive, you know, wanting to get down to the park in a safe fashion. I understand, you know, moms with baby carriages and dogs on leashes. I've ran into the same situation there, so I get it. So I understand that piece. I'm not certain that I'm sold on the whole, that middle, the Hidden Valley. I would prefer to see people be able to come directly off of Prairie View Drive, go south to Pleasant Ridge, and then head down to the connection. It's just my personal opinion, it'd be a little less concrete. And really, the goal is here, the people over in the Prairie Ridge area, they want to get to, one, either the park or the sock rail trail by coming down to Timber, or Pleasant Ridge. I just was curious.
Yeah, so, I mean, certainly I think from a staff perspective, we would like to see that connection. I know that it's going to be a difficult connection to construct. And I know that's what the developer's position is, is can we meet grades to do that? But, you know, West Ridge and Prairie View will connect at some point. This area is likely going to develop, if not this summer, within a very short period of time. And correct me if I'm wrong, Randy, is, does the preliminary plat, or is there a development plan that shows a connection coming out to Pleasant Ridge?
I believe there was.
Yeah.
I'm not certain, but I believe there was.
You know, so there's discussion there now, the topography is part of the issue. There's a substantial amount of grade between where this road will sit, getting up to Pleasant Ridge. And so it's the constructability is the question. I know the developer has indicated that that's not their preferred option just because of that. I don't know if it would meet our design standards for that.
Are you telling me that there's a lot of difference in the topography between the end, the south side of Prairie View Drive to Pleasant Ridge?
There is, is my understanding.
There is.
Yep.
Oh, yeah.
But if we're doing a sidewalk, you can walk that steep. Talking sidewalks here, you're not talking the roads.
Right.
So you could have a steep sidewalk that a kid could ride his bike or people could walk.
I mean, we have those same type of piddles out around the sock rail trail around the lake. I mean, I guess I was just thinking of a quicker route from that subdivision on to Pleasant Ridge Road.
Well, if they're, if they're going to the park and to hook up with the sock rail trail, they're going to use Timberline.
Yeah, I know that.
Yeah.
And I, I'm okay with that piece, I just don't really know why it needs to be on that middle road.
On Hidden Valley.
Right. I really don't. But.
So what you're suggesting is bring it down Pleasant Ridge? And then if, as this develops, be it a sidewalk or road sidewalk connection?
At the end of Prairie View Drive, on the south, right there.
Like right there?
Mm-hmm. Because everybody from that subdivision.
What I would suggest is not put it there.
Well, yeah.
Put a lot or two in and then put it there. It's easier to sell a sidewalk when you're buying a lot next to a sidewalk than, I mean, that's the discussion and number of people here tonight is. But that may alleviate, that's a council discussion.
Misty, I had the same concerns. I had the same thought and concerns.
Well, nobody's going to like a sidewalk, I don't think, anywhere you put it, because they have to take care of it. But we obviously know we need to get.
We're talking people walking in bicycles on this, not so much the vehicle traffic. Is there any concerns for safety? Is there any concerns for safety on these two? Have you had instances or?
I can just go off statistics from what we have. And when we run Pleasant Ridge, there's no car pedestrian accidents, there's no car pedestrian accident on either one of the roads. I can't remember the date, I did pull it, I think it's that, Randy. There was a vehicle accident on Timberline at the bend where it goes to Main Street. It was due to slick road conditions, they hit the barrier there. So, I can't talk about close calls.
But nothing with, nothing with people walking or riding bikes, anything on that?
Not reported. I can't talk about close calls because those just don't get reported to, so I don't know on that. But as far as actual physical accidents, there's been none.
You just have to be, yeah.
Yes, yes, approach and, yeah, name, rank and serial number.
I've lived on Timberline for over twenty years. And I work from home, home almost every single day, working from my kitchen, concede the people that walk. And I can tell you, well, all winter, probably hardly anybody except for Jen Munson does walk her two dogs. And she has no problem walking on the street. I have young kids, we've all, a lot of us have had young kids, we've never had any trouble. I can tell you, nobody bikes up our street. They might go down, I've never seen anybody actually bike except for your, you guys, once in a while. But it's not any fun coming up. My husband bought me a seven-hundred-dollar bike, I've used it twice because I can't get back up my hill. So, I told him, you need to buy me an electric one if I'm going to bike. But we don't get a lot, we don't get a lot of walkers. It's basically, it's basically me, maybe Barb Bolt, maybe Megan Bating. And there might be one or, one other person I've seen come through recently when it was a warm day, but in the summertime, we again, maybe, you know, just a couple of us. And as far as at the top of the hill, they don't come our way because it's not fun walking back up either. And they, they have another way to get, get to the park and that's going around the other way. And as far as traffic, traffic's increased a little bit, but not that much over the last ten years because you have the entrance to seventy-one, which I take all the time, cutting through that, the neighborhood over the top of the hill. And I, and like my aunt and uncle live in that neighborhood, they're down the second street down. Okay, not right at the top, but down. They said, we never come your way, occasionally just to check out what you're doing. But we go down and around to the fork in the road to go up Rolling Hills, or we go out seventy-one to go to Hy-Vee or any place that way. We don't get that much traffic. And I'm telling you, as far as walking traffic, and when we have kids in the neighborhood, if they're going to go to a neighborhood, they run across the street, they run on the grass, just like our kids did. Scarlett Fleischer was here, they have four little kids, she does not want the sidewalk. And they both said, you put a sidewalk in, my kids are not going to ride the bike on the sidewalk. Sidewalks for walking, they will learn how to ride their bike on the street, just like our kids did. My kids didn't use it that much because, like I said, it's not fun riding back up the hill. You know, occasionally they take it to the, to the movies, but.
Is there anything else?
I just.
No, on Pleasant Ridge, I, I swear I've seen signs that say no trucks. I mean, there's, there's no reason for trucks to be going down Pleasant Ridge. You can say truck route. If, if a person is moving out of their house, people will understand why there's a semi on Pleasant Ridge. But I don't understand why our community can't say, we don't want trucks going down your road. And I agree with you, at seven-fifteen in the morning, when the stinky truck leaves the rendering works, and it's at seven-fifteen every single morning, and those other trucks, now you have children on your street. You never used to have many kids that were living on your street. My mom lived down the street and down a couple of houses from you, ever since that road began, right? Pleasant Ridge. You know, maybe you need a sidewalk on Pleasant Ridge, right? I understand now with truck traffic and kids on the street. But our particular neighborhood, what happens here, folks? A couple of these folks right here will come down once. And when you try to go back up this hill, go out and walk it sometime, this is one of the longest hills in Carroll. These people all are leaving, can you move that down a little bit? It's all flat, once you leave right here to walk to the park. So, that's what these folks are doing. I know a lot of these people in this neighborhood. This is where, when sometimes we'll leave here and I'll drive to work that way. Okay, I take Interstate seventy-one to work every single day. Okay, I come home, I'll come down this way and come back. But these folks that are, the few that are right here, may try that once, but they all said, you know, Grady, it's so easy, it's flat, it's all flat right here. Okay, it's flat to right here. Here, you have to come up a hill. And as far as if you wanted to bust through here and come down, you can see right here where trucks driving. Okay, right here, you see that? Okay, somebody was saying how big this hill is. Come on, it, it's not that big. And you can see right here where trucks already go. I thought Matt was going to bust one out right here, wasn't there supposed to be a, an entrance? Now, I don't know if he wants to lose a lot, maybe, does he decide that?
He would make a proposal, yes.
Okay, because I think he had that in the original plan, okay? But, you know, I mean, if you wanted to give these folks a place to get to the trail, maybe that would be the thing, but.
You know, when, when it, when we first went to a meeting, everybody from our street was at that meeting with Carolyn, and you were there. And we all said we didn't need a sidewalk, except for Nelson Hawcapp wanted it. And I think it's just because he wanted to walk his little dog on a sidewalk down to the park. And I think it was a great idea, the way you, you bring, you ran the sidewalk from the street to the trail. Because if I walked down that way, I always cut over to the trail. I don't even think it was needed to take it to the other end of the sidewalk on Pleasant Ridge the way it was and wait and spend that money. I mean, really, most people are wanting to just get to the trail, you know? I'm just saying, there's just, there's just not that many people that.
I've heard different on that where they want to walk on Main Street, they're happy that.
Really? On Main Street, then?
Yeah.
Well, well, maybe coming from that way to the trail? The opposite way?
So, was what, was there two or three lots we had? So, yeah, I've heard that they, they're happy that that can.
That got, because they come that way instead?
Well, the thing is, there's no place for pedestrians, dog walkers, even if it's just a few K. I've come across situations that are dangerous. And even one person getting hurt or little kids, they come flying around that corner on their bikes.
Nobody rides their bike on there. I'm serious, I live there, I'm there every single day. You go to work and you're not there during the day to see it. Have you seen a kid? I've never seen a kid ride their bike.
I agree.
I should bring out my video.
Yeah, we should.
I, I videoed for three months to count how many people went through there. And granted, it was December, January and February. There was nine people. Nine people went up and down our street in December, January and February. And granted, that's.
The lowest.
It's time. I mean, what would be the estimate on a cost of putting in this sidewalk?
Yeah, what's that going to cost? What did it cost on the other?
Total estimated cost?
How much?
Hold on, we're not done yet.
How much did it cost from Hawcapps?
How much was that?
I don't recall that number.
Does anybody have that number?
Isn't there a limit on speaking time?
Well, during the oral part of it, there is, but yeah, I'm, I'm the one that kind of needs to be sheriff. So, we'll, we'll bring it to a closure. I mean, the, the council needs to give Randy direction on this. And the way, if I'm hearing it correctly, you've got a choice of doing nothing, you've got a choice of Pleasant Ridge only, you've got a choice of Pleasant Ridge and Hidden Valley, you've got a choice of Pleasant Ridge, Hidden Valley and Timberline. Or, we take a holistic approach to the, the whole city and encompass every area that there may be a, a public safety concern where there's no sidewalk. But Randy needs direction on this thing, and it is almost past closing. But Greg, if you want to give us a couple of minutes?
Yeah, I do.
Yep, let's, let's do that.
My name is Greg Seaman, I live on Pleasant Ridge Road. I have owned property on Pleasant Ridge Road for over thirty years. And I've lived on Pleasant Ridge Road for almost twenty-nine years. Now, Mike, can you run that same diagram? I want to talk about this.
It's coming up. I think.
Apparently he just wants to flush.
Okay, I'm going to step over here. We live right here and our property extends in this area right here. Now, when we first looked at property in this area, there was a fence that stopped traffic right here. You couldn't even, there was no road that would even went down there. When we first built our house, there was no way to get from this area to Grant Road because the culvert that extended that roadway had not yet been constructed. Now, in the last thirty years, this whole area has changed considerably. This road has, Pleasant Ridge Road now has as much traffic on it as does Grant Road. There are no, there are sidewalks from this point east on both sides of the street. There are no sidewalks on either side of the street as you go west to Hidden Valley or further west to Highway seventy-one. With, with the popularity of walking and the popularity of the sock rail trail, this street has become pedestrian-heavy because there's no sidewalks past this point west. And I think it's a serious safety issue. I drive on this street every day, and I will tell you that when the weather is warm, and we're getting to that point, and we've had that point for several days, there is constant pedestrian traffic on this Pleasant Ridge Road. Now, another street that has changed tremendously is Hidden Valley Road and Timberline Road. Timberline Road has now become an art, what I would refer to as an arterial street. The traffic volume on Timberline Road is completely different than it was twenty or thirty years ago. Not even, no comparison. And it has a certain atmospheric problem in that, in the spring of the year, for a couple of weeks as you drive to work on Timberline Road, and I do every day, that road, the sun is directly in your eyes, preventing you from clearly seeing not only uncoming traffic, but anybody walking in the street. Now, the same thing is true as I come home from work in the fall of the year, for a couple of weeks you drive directly into the sun, it's a safety hazard. Now, opinions differ, but I certainly see a frequent amount of pedestrian traffic in the warmer months on Timberline Road and on Hidden Valley Road. I think this is a serious safety issue. I think I agree with the Hawcapps who have said, it's not a question of, if it's a question of when, there's going to be a serious injury with a pedestrian on Pleasant Ridge, Hidden Valley or Timberline. And I think this problem needs to get fixed. So, I would encourage the city council to go ahead and design this project. And as far as how it's paid for, I know we paid for the sidewalk in front of our house. And I even made a deal with the city that if they extend the sidewalk further west on Pleasant Ridge Road, I'm going to tear a bunch of my sidewalk out and replace it at a different grade. And I'm happy to do that. Because I think this, this, the, the danger of continuing the traffic situation and the pedestrian situation the way it is demands that something be done before we have a tragedy. Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. Okay, go ahead, Jeff. Jeff, sure, yeah.
I know you're running late.
Name, rank and serial number.
Jeff, Jeff Bolt, congratulations on your retirement, retirement as well. I live on two-twelve Timberline, and I've been there for twenty-nine years. I am an avid biker and walk, we walk it, bike it almost every day. People avoid Timberline like the play because of the gradient, whether you're going down or up. I lauded what they did in the last council, where they put the sidewalk and the barrier, because people slid down that road and went off the side. It was ridiculously unsafe. So, they made it much safer with the barrier and the sidewalk at the bottom of Timberline. People don't walk it, you don't want to go down it, you don't want to come up it, you don't want to drive down it, you don't want to drive up if it's slick. I've literally seen people stop in the winter and slide all the way down the hill and go in and go off in the road. Or coming up, you can't get up that hill. Pleasant Ridge is a much easier gradient. Yes, when I get to your end of the sidewalk, I have to cut out in the road, finish the hill, Hidden Valley. Yeah, that's, it's a steep hill, I've had one accident on my bike because people were turning in driveways, yes, that's it. But people just don't go down Timberline. It's, it's, if you want to make it safe, you're going to have to change the curve, take out Dr. McCabe's old house and make that so it's a gradual curve instead of a steep curve. Like I say, I, we've been there twenty-nine years. So, we always go to Pleasant Ridge, and I know the traffic is high. You talked about the southern access and all that gradiment, that would help. If I, we always go that way. Weather-wise, hiking, biking, you just don't use it, it's too steep. I don't know how you fix steep. Pleasant Ridge is much more gradual. Again, I bike it, I do it, we walk it. So, again, a comprehensive plan, I think, would be appropriate. Look at the whole thing, but just to put a sidewalk on Timberline, I don't think fixes a problem. Just put a sidewalk on Pleasant Ridge, I don't think fixes a problem. And access to go there to Pleasant Ridge probably helps. We're funneling too much traffic down in a dangerous road with a steep hill and a sharp curve. That sounds like a lot of money to me. But what we did previously to put the sidewalk on the outside, take out trees, put the barrier, I think, made a ton of sense. I'm super happy with what has already been done. So, anyway, that's my input from somebody who's been there for, and I, I don't care. Whatever makes it safer, you know, we've been there, yeah, we have the big backyard, it's not going to matter. What makes most sense, again, for safety, that's what I think about. The gradual curve or down or right of curve and the steep curve with a big hill. No, anyway, thanks.
Thanks, Jeff.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
I, I'm glad he mentioned the hill because when I'm heading toward Maine and I'm stopping at the top of the hill, getting ready to turn east off of Hidden Valley, there are no stop signs there. But people are flying out of Prairie View and they just fly down that street where there are no sidewalks on either side. And they, you know, it's very easy to say there aren't many people, but what if it's your kid that gets hit? They're the one kid. I've come across kids flying down that curve. And I'm coming around it and then they connect with the sidewalk. But there is no place for people to go other than to be in the street with big SUVs, with big pickup trucks and all the traffic who are, they are zooming around down Timberline and going around that curve.
One quick thing, I wish Jen was here, Jen Munson had to leave. She tried to get a stop sign put at where you're talking.
Mm-hmm.
And they did a traffic study and they said there's not enough traffic.
Yeah, Grady, everybody stops anyway bec-.
No, but I mean, if they're, if we're saying there's all this traffic that's going down Timberline, they've done a study.
Twice.
That said, twice, that said there's not enough traffic there to put a stop sign.
I, I don't know, I deferred.
No, I mean, that's, there's been two studies.
I understand.
Well, I'm going to allow the council to give Randy some consideration here. We need to, I think I outlined what the five choices are, I'm not sure if I left one out. But we need to give Randy some direction here on how to proceed or not proceed or how to exactly proceed.
Well, I've got some questions. Are, are we just trying to determine what plan to do? Or we're not actually doing the project? We're just asking for some money for the architect? We're just asking for some money for the architect to figure this out, right?
Randy's asking for fifteen thousand for design.
Yes, so we're not talking about doing it all, we're just...
Design is yet, so...
So, you know, we're, we're getting ahead of ourselves on a little bit of this.
Well, but he's gotta give them direction on what, what to design.
Well, let me, let me keep going here, Mark.
Okay.
I, you know, here's where I'm at on this, is, is I have a difficult time trying to say to go ahead with a project when we really don't have any strong facts. Our, our Pleasant Ridge, yes, everybody realizes that is very busy, everybody's in agreement, there should be sidewalks there. I get that, I'm fine with that, in fact, I'd, I'd extend, you know, keep going west until, you know, you got two properties that are existing, and then you can, you got a couple more here that are in the, are in the other section, you can go to the sidewalk that far. I, I'm fine with that. Where I struggle with is people telling me on, on High Ridge or Pleasant View and Hidden Valley, yes, there's a lot of traffic, no, there's nothing. I have a hard time trying to make a decision when there's no solid data on what's really going on there.
I agree with you, one hundred percent.
You know, i- i- if there was data that this thing is very, very busy and it's unsafe, yeah, but, uh, so my, here's the other question Randy might have, is I'm okay with the study for the engineers to do, uh, Pleasant Ridge, okay? Is it much more costly to just do the whole thing so we can have some dollar figures to look at? You know, we're, we're gonna say fifteen thousand, is that gonna be what we're gonna spend if we wanna do just Pleasant Ridge, or is it gonna be fifteen thousand for the whole thing?
No, the fifteen thousand is estimated for the, the entire illustration on the...
So, do you think it would be less if we just asked to do Pleasant Ridge and nothing else?
Yes.
Okay.
Well, I think Carolyn, you said everybody on your street was okay with having it, so I don't, they just put a sidewalk and be done.
Pretty much, from what I've heard. But it was a, a council priority, it had six out of eight votes to look at the whole thing, and that's why we allocated the fifteen thousand. And I, and Randy, you know, in the memo, it suggests, um, that we throw this out there to the bidder ten point to see if they would have some interest in this. And I know everybody is using the streets at different times, different, and by the way, I am home all day, I'm now retired K, and, and I use these streets myself that trail a lot, I drive them all the time, and I think it's just hit or miss what we all see, and I respect your opinion, and, uh, but I've just come across things, and there are a lot of young kids, and I feel like we have to be the adult in the room, 'cause kids don't always use their best discretion on their bikes, when they're riding, uh, you know, uh, when they're walking, running down to the park. They have no place to go but to be in the street, on Timberline, on Hidden Valley, and there is nothing. And I just see it, um, as a safety hazard, even intermittently. It, the, there are a lot of kids that are out recreating, and I think this would be a good project to kickstart and then move on from there and do, as somebody mentioned, pri- start prioritizing these problem areas I've spoken for years about, uh, over by the Aquatic Center, and people bring it up to me that we need to extend that sidewalk. So, there are some other areas that need to be addressed, but I, I just see this as a safety hazard because of all the kids in the area and not using their good judgment and being mixed with, with, um, all the, all the cars, the SUVs, the pickup trucks. I've just had close calls myself, and it worries me a lot.
Well, I won't get a chance to vote when it comes to a resolution, but my opinion is, it's, it's been rather clear to me, is it appears as though the residents along Pleasant Be- Pleasant, or, yeah, Pleasant Ridge want to have something done there, so I think that would certainly be a consideration. But I haven't seen enough documentation or support or anything that would, uh, recommend that anything be done along Prairie, Prairie View, I'm sorry, uh, Hidden Valley. And then, uh, there's clear delineation that people along Timberline do not want it.
What you're doing with that...
And so I don't, I just, excuse me, I'm just gonna finish here, I promise, 'cause I, I wanna get out of here too. But i- i- I, I just don't feel as though it's our prerogative or position to, you know, force things onto people that clearly don't want it. And it's, you know, I, I realize public safety and I get all of that too, um, but I, I just, I, I just can't go to bed tonight thinking that we're, you know, forcing that type of thing onto people that clearly don't want it.
Well, then you've made one portion safe, but they're still channeling on Hidden Valley to get to their homes on Prairie View, so...
Yeah, I'm not here to debate it, that's just my point.
Yeah, they're back walking in the street once they end at the corner of, um...
Mark, I guess I'll just kinda tell you where I'm at. I think that we need to prioritize all the sidewalks within the city, we can't take one specific area that the majority of residents obviously are opposed to, and figure out where in the city we actually need to have them and start from there.
I think we have to trust our citizens to be safe. Walk on the right side of the road if they're walking on the street, I think everybody knows you walk against the traffic. I mean, when I was a kid, I grew up on Highway thirty, I rode my bike all the time.
If they did that on Timberline and they were facing the traffic, they would be coming on, and the traffic coming at them heading west, there's no place to go because of the terrain of the home right there, and so you can't do that.
Raised seven kids there, and they had mopeds and bikes and tricycles and big wheels.
Marvin and I walked on that side of the street all the time. You bet, need that curbside walking.
Well, let's reach a decision here. Let's, let's give him some direction here.
Our only decision is, do we wanna spend the fifteen thousand tonight?
That, yes.
That's our only decision.
Um, yes, that's the question for tonight.
And a design service encompassing all three streets.
And we've budgeted for it, it's in the budget.
Yeah, it, it's budgeted, doesn't mean we have to spend it.
Right.
Well, I agree, something needs to be done with Pleasant Ridge, and to get forward somewhat on at least that, I'm willing to spend some money for the engineers to figure out how much this is all gonna cost, and then we can decide from there. So I'll make the motion to, even though it's fifteen thousand, I don't know if we can get less, but, uh, I suppose to spend the fifteen thousand to find out what actually is gonna cost on everything, and then we can discuss at a later time. But the reason I'm wanting to go ahead with that is because of Pleasant Ridge, there is a, to me, there is a need there because nobody's arguing that that's safe. So we gotta do something there. So I'll make a motion to spend the fifteen thousand for the engineers to do their work.
Okay, we have a motion in a second to spend fifteen thousand, um, well, give direction, but we're not gonna name J E O or McClure at this point, right?
We haven't selected anyone at this point.
So at least to give Randy, the motion is to give Randy direction to begin that process then, correct?
Just on Pleasant Ridge?
No.
Well, I don't know how much less it would cost if we just did Pleasant Ridge, Randy doesn't know that, but...
The fifteen is an estimate for the, for the entire amount of length, based on the sidewalk that was constructed on Main and Timberline. You know, I guess proportionately, based on length, is one way to, to estimate it, but it, it'll, it'll all be estimates until we get an actual proposal.
So to be clear, is this supposed to be paid for with taxpayer dollars, or is this something that should be held on the...
It was general fund.
General fund? But is that normal? That if we wanted to put in a sidewalk, it, it falls on the owner of the property, or is it taxpayer dollars?
Well, that, that's the other question that's been raised, is, you know, just due to an inconsistent policy that the city has had, you know, as far as the requirement of sidewalks, you know, we're on fairly new ground. I think we've done some sidewalks, a few elsewhere, but I can't name them.
Very limited. Main Street would be one, and that'd be two and a half homes. Is there other examples, Randy, in your career?
Um, yeah, well, yeah, I guess as far as I recall, it's been done both ways. You know, where a sidewalk, actually, the city wants it directed to be put in, uh, the city has paid. There are instances where the homeowners have paid, um, and then there's been a combination of things. When we went back to the, the last program of putting sidewalks all over town where they needed to be, um, there was a sharing. The homeowner, uh, was charged for the linear foot cost of the sidewalk, but anything over and above just tearing up some sod and putting down some concrete was paid for by the city. And there were, you know, in those cases, there were some tree removal, there were some retaining walls, there was some grading that was more so than just taking up sod and putting down four feet of concrete. So it was kind of a joint-type, uh, funding for a side, for that project. So it's really, you're right, it's been all over the board. And it's just a matter of, uh, the council desire, you know, the sitting council, how they desire to, to get sidewalks constructed.
So which is be another consideration as we envision a comprehensive citywide plan.
Mm-hmm, sure.
So, uh, but right now, the issue according to the agenda is just these three streets. So there is still a motion in a second?
No, that's just for this, the architect fees or the design fees.
Up to fifteen thousand, right?
Right, yep.
Yeah, to seek proposals, engineering services proposals.
Correct, yep, yep, that's why I heard it. Okay, there is a motion in a second on the floor. Any further discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Ford Narrow?
No.
Shrek? Dirks?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Motion is approved, three, two.
Okay. Well, thank you. That is the end of the items on the agenda. Uh, we have committee reports, uh, comments from the mayor, I have none, comments from the city council, Laverne?
Yeah.
Still in session?
Saturday, I went down to Des Moines to a League of City meeting, and one of the discussions there was housing, and finding out, talking to all those people in the, in the metro area, there's no incentives. They don't have to worry about it. And, you know, that was, you know, that's kinda out of our area. Normally, we're in northwest Iowa, so I was down there, a lot of new people and stuff, and talking to almost all of them, it was a discussion, if you're out of the metro area and you're not having a housing incentive, you're probably not building houses, is what it was. So just let you know what, you know, what we're looking at is what's happening all over. In fact, Newton, which is close to Des Moines, they have housing incentives. And they range from everything. Mike, at one time showed us all the different ranges, ranges, so, you know, we just, I just thought I'd let you know that that's what I found out, that there's, everybody's trying to figure this out, just like we are.
Laverne, was that M L A three?
Yeah.
I, I did that one too online. It was very good, really, really good.
Anything else, Laverne?
Not at this point, there, there is some other things, but I'll, I wanted to bring that one up because we're gonna be talking about housing in May eleventh.
All right. Any other comments from the council? Uh, how about the city manager?
None this evening, there, thank you.
Nothing, uh, there can be anything there?
Done right now.
Okay, perfect, that's good. Okay, we are in order for a, a motion to adjourn. Moved and seconded. Uh, hearing, any other discussion? Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Shrek?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Ford Narrow?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
We are adjourned.